Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the Lord Mayor of Cork, councillor Joe Cavanagh, chief executive Anne Doherty and elected members of Cork City Council.
Okay, you can see it. Okay, welcome everybody. And the first thing we'll do is we'll have a roll call. Please, thank you very much.
Corlorn Flynn.
Ansham.
Corlorn Maher. Corlorn Tynean. Ardvera.
Ansham.
Corlorn Moran. Corlorn Kíochan. Corlorn Fitzgerald. Corlorn Nugent. Corlorn Sheehan. Corlorn Collins. Corlorn Ryan.
Ansham.
Corlorn Boylan. Corlorn Cahill. Corlorn Bog. Corlorn Desmond. Corlorn McCarthy. Corlorn Shannon. Corlorn Ford. Corlorn McFinn.
Ansham.
Corlorn Boyle. Corlorn Martin. Corlorn O'Callaghan. Corlorn Dunneen.
Ansham.
Corlorn Cairns. Corlorn Dennehy. Corlorn Canty. Corlorn Coletfinn. Corlorn Colum Kellyher. Corlorn Garrett Kellyher. Corlorn Maloney. And Corlorn Ring.
Okay, we have a quorum. I'm now going to proceed with the prayer and a minute's reflection. Directly beseech thee, O Lord, our actions by the holy inspirations and carry them on by thy gracious assistance. That every word and work of ours may always begin from thee and by thee be happily ended through Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you. You're seated. Okay, I'm just going to read out the brief safety announcement. Ladies and gentlemen, in the interest of safety, I would ask you to note the position of and access to the exit from this hall. There are exits to the left and the back of the hall. The use of mobile phones are not allowed at any time by members of the public. I would ask people also to refrain from recording and photographing during the meeting. Corlornie, please make your way to the microphone when I call you to do so. And it will be sanitized by corporate affairs after each use. Please remove your mask when speaking. Okay. The next item on the agenda. I'm requesting, I would like to propose a suspension of standing orders to allow media cameras into the hall for the handover of the Lord Mayor's chain and to stream and record the meeting. I need to propose it. It's like, great, Sean Martin and Derek Canty. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is my address. Councillors, colleagues. Sorry, I'm going to stand for this if you don't mind. Councillors, colleagues, chief executive and officials. And of course, Lady Maris, it has been very humbling and indeed an honour for me to wear this chain, which is well over 230 years old. And of course, it was worn by former Lord Mayors Thomas McCurtin and Terence Maxwini, whose names I was honoured to add to the role of honorary citizens of Cork City last Friday. A proposal we made at the meeting in October 2020, a proposal that was also seconded by my colleague councillor Ken Collins. So it was a very iconic event and a very important event in the year of my morality, and I was privileged to participate in it. There's a bit of an irony, a bit of a parallel, and it struck me last Friday. 100 years ago, as we celebrate the commemoration, the likes of Thomas McCurtin and Terence Maxwini and indeed Don Log O'Callaghan were spending their lives running from ground forces and police, et cetera. And their profile wouldn't have been as prolific as a Lord Mayor in subsequent years. 100 years later, all of us as councillors and indeed the Lord Mayor and the incoming Lord Mayor, we're fighting a different fight, and it's the fight against COVID. And, you know, I'd like to pay tribute to all of you for your patience and for your resilience and for your fortitude in the way that we have reinvented ourselves and reimagined the way we do things throughout the year. It hasn't been easy. COVID has been with us for 15, 16 months at this stage, and it's going to be with us for some time yet. I've always been struck, and one thing that has struck me during the year, by the pride and the respect that the people of Cork have for the Lord Mayor's chain, the Lord Mayor's office, and indeed the City Hall. The City Hall belongs to the people, and the people of Cork have gifted the City Hall to the HSE for the foreseeable future, for the vaccination programme that's on at the moment, in the fight against COVID. So I'm very proud of the people of Cork. I'm very proud of their resilience, of their fortitude and the way that people have stood up and, I suppose, taken whatever steps needed to be taken. And let's admit it, we were all finding our way over the last 12 months. We didn't know from one day to the next what we would have to do in order to reimagine and reinvent the way we did our business as city councillors. I would like at this point to thank Colais de Cullum. This is a very historic event. It is the first time in history, to my knowledge, unless councillor McCarthy will tell me differently later on, but it's the first time to my knowledge that the Lord Mayor of Cork has been elected outside the walls of City Hall. So this is a, this year has been a year of firsts in so many ways, and here's another first, and we're part of that history. So I'm very proud to be part of that history. It is wonderful that we can reach out to one of the newly added areas to the new city, Ballincolig. And I think it's great that Colais de Cullum have facilitated us here today. So thank you very much to Michelle Stiney, the principal here, who, as it happens, I sat beside in school. So when I was looking around, five weeks ago, I went down to Westgate Foundation, and I met Julie Murphy, who's the CEO there, who also sat in the same class. So everybody's after coming to Ballincolig from where I grew up. So thank you, thank you councillors and Ballincolig for facilitating all the Covids. I suppose my year as Lord Mayor has been a very different year. It's been a very challenging year, but a very fulfilling year. But I have to say that I have enjoyed every minute of it. I've had to reinvent, like everybody else, I've had to reinvent the way I do things. I've had to reinvent, I suppose, the way that I've lived my life, the way I've executed the role of Lord Mayor. And there are many former Lord Mayors sitting here amongst the elected members, many of whom I have leant on during the year for advice and for support. And for that, for that I thank you. And you know who you are, I'm not going to name anybody, you know who you are. We've had many conversations throughout the year, and I'm not afraid to ask for advice because as far as I'm concerned, every day we learn something new. And I'm not afraid to ask for advice from somebody who's been down the road before, who's possibly made the mistakes that I made during the year. Business owners or business community have had a terrible year. They've had a terrible 15 or 16 months, and it's been very difficult for them. And, you know, I've tried very hard, the Lady Mayor, Stephanie and I, for the first two months of our term, we spent many, many days and weeks walking around the business communities of many, many areas of the city, supporting businesses, which is very important. And we finished our year doing the same last week with the CBA. I've been asked the question by so many people over my term, and the usual comment is, actually, you've been fierce and lucky, but your term is Lord Mayor. Do you know what? I mean, my answer has been the same to everybody. Every day you get out of bed is a good day. Any day you put your two feet on the ground is a good day. There's many people who can't. But any day you can get out of bed and put your two feet on the ground as Lord Mayor of this wonderful city is an absolutely magnificent day, and I'll take that any day. I had three main goals, three main areas of focus during the year. First one was commemoration, the second one was supporting business community, as I said, and the third one was my passion for the Cork Against Litter campaign and supporting our officials inside in the various initiatives that we've put forward as a council. And I'm delighted to see so many members jumping on board, so many voluntary communities jumping on board and getting involved and empowering their local communities and voluntary groups in delivering for their local communities. And I think it's of critical importance that we continue to do that, and I will certainly do it with a passion. I suppose last year, or last Friday was an iconic time as part of the commemoration programme. It kind of capped the year in terms of commemoration when we added the names of Maxwini and McCurtin to the role of honorary citizens of the city. And we should all be very proud because we were all part of that. Every day for me was a busy day. I suppose I could have stayed at home, looked out the window and felt sorry for myself, but he didn't do that. As far as I was concerned, every single day was a working day, and every single day was the day I represented, another day I represented the city as first citizen. So I made a concerted effort to make every day count. And I think it's of critical importance that I did that, and I did it to the best of my ability. The most important thing is to continue to communicate with local communities. And as elected members, I know that each and every one of you has a deep passion for each of your local communities. And I want to congratulate and pay tribute to each and every one of you. We might be different political parties, but we all have the same end goal, to make life a better place and make Cork City and our local communities a better place for all that work and live in them. There's no place for negativity, not in my books anyway. Anybody that knows me, I'm a glass half-full merchant and I always will be. Negative people bring a problem to every solution, and I try my best to leave negative people behind. I want to pay tribute to Cork City Council on the ongoing delivery of housing projects across the city, of which each and every one of you are a part of and have been a part of and will be in the coming months and years. Without going into any specifics, as time doesn't permit, I have to congratulate the City Council team on the ongoing and continued increasing developments across our city in so many areas, many of which we launched even last week. I'm delighted to oversee the announcement of the URDF funding for the Dotlands development and the Grand Parade quarter of 0.5 billion euro and the opening of Penrose Dock, which will deliver 1100 jobs. That was only in the last two weeks. All good news stories for Cork, and we are all part of that history. And we are all part of delivering that, not any one person. So everyone here should be so proud of everything that you have delivered and played a significant part of. I'm going to just say a few thank yous. I want to, first of all, before I start my thank yous, I want to wish the incoming Lord Mayor the very best of luck in the coming year. It's a different playing pitch from what previous Lord Mayors have had to, I won't say endure, had to, I suppose, engage in. But I have every confidence in the incoming Lord Mayor and the ability and the competence. And a word of advice, I was asked, what's your word of advice for incoming Lord Mayor? Just put your market and do the best you can. And I have every confidence that you're surrounded by 30 other people who have the same end goal. And I'd like to wish you and your family, it's a very important night for you and congratulate you on your election here tonight. It's a very proud night for you and your family, and I wish you the very best of luck as you take this seat. I'd like to thank my Deputy Lord Mayor councillor Shane O'Callaghan. Normally as Deputy Lord Mayor, you'd have a load of events during the year. Unfortunately, never mind the Deputy Lord Mayor, I didn't have that many events. And but councillor O'Callaghan was always there to pick up the phone, have a chat, bounce stuff off him. Sometimes you're feeling a bit confused, which way am I going to go, and we'd hop a few ideas off each other. And it's always nice to have someone you can bounce ideas off, as I've done off our leader councillor Des Cahill and many times. So Des, thank you for that as well. My fellow councillors, I mentioned former Lord Mayors and all the fellow councillors. The respect that each and every one of you have for the Lord Mayor's chain is incredible. And I want to thank each and every one of you for the respect and the dignity that you've shown me and Stephanie during the year. We're eternally grateful to each and every one of you for everything you've done. Political divide didn't come into it because when you're Lord Mayor, it's an apolitical role. And I tried to be as apolitical as I could for the whole year, and I would like to think I've done that. I'd like to thank my Fine Gael colleagues. I know I've been apolitical, haven't attended any Fine Gael meetings as such, but by the same token, I know they're there for me and there to support me. I'd like to thank the chief, chief executive Anne Doherty. It's been an incredibly difficult year for the chief executive and her team because we all know the difficulties and the challenges that we have faced, not just as a council but as a city. And in fairness to our chief executive, I'm very proud of the positive way and the positive leadership that Anna Doherty and her executive team and indeed everybody, all the staff in City Hall have shown throughout the last 12 to 15 months. So thank you for that. I'd like to thank the Lord Mayor's office. Nicola, Finnbar and Rose. I don't know where I'd be without them, to be honest with you. Some mornings I'd go into Nicola and I'd say, jeez, if you weren't here, I wouldn't know whether to turn right or turn left. My whole life was organised for me, so I was totally spoiled. And Finnbar knows, we had mighty crack in the car, anybody's been in the car with Finnbar, knows it's a wonderful experience and very unique. And Finnbar is better known than any Lord Mayor, by the way, I'd have you know. Everybody waves at the car, but I thought they were waving at me, but they're actually waving at Finnbar, so. But a thoroughly gentleman and an absolute joy to go round with throughout the year. All the directors in City Hall for ongoing support and advice, of which I needed a lot in so many different areas. I'd like to thank the media. I'd like to thank the media, the Echo, the Examiner, local radio stations, 96 FM and Red FM, and all the national radio stations because there was lots of stuff went on during the year that was picked up by radio and I had to engage with them as well, and they were absolutely fabulous. I'd like to thank my family. My son Philip often says to me, Dad, I know they all stand up when you walk into a room down in City Hall, but when you come in the gate there, you're nothing. But make sure you stand up when I come into the room. I know there's your typical 20-something. But you know what? He's very proud of me and my other son in Dublin, Glenn, his wife, Mairead, and my grandson Theo. So it is wonderful. And most importantly, I want to give a special mention to the Lady Maris, Stephanie. People think I have some great ideas and I was doing a great job. I wouldn't have done half the job, only for Stephanie. And I call her the minister for good ideas, and there's a reason for it because all the good ideas usually came from her. I thought I had a good idea, but by the time she was finishing analysing it, it became a slightly different idea. So I want to thank Stephanie for putting up with my tantrums, putting up with my mood swings, if I got stressed out, but for guiding me along the path of sensibility more often than not. So thank you, Stephanie. In conclusion, I've had a great year. I've learned so much. I've made many friends and acquaintances throughout the year. What are my highlights of the year? I've been asked that question by so many people. What's your highlight of the year? And the answer is very simple. I've had hundreds of highlights. Every day and every event that I put the chain around my neck, that was a highlight. And that was a highlight equivalent to any other highlight. So I've had hundreds of highlights, and no highlight was superseded any other highlight. The day you put the chain around your neck is a real good highlight. So I want to thank each and every one of you, my colleagues, for affording me the opportunity to make, I suppose, to make so many treasured memories that will live me and Stephanie for the rest of our lives. Thank you. Right. Where am I going now? It's slightly over five minutes. Speech is from members of council, and I need one rep from each of the five groupings, two minutes each. But if you're saying nice things, just knock yourself out, lads. You can say what you like, you know. Councillor Des Cal.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And you have had a great year, and I suppose you touched on a lot of the points that I was going to mention. One of those that you said, that a lot of people would have said it was an unlucky year. But I think the reality there is that it was an extremely lucky year for Cork to have had you as Lord Mayor during this year's COVID. Your patience, which is an abundance, which I envy yourself, your positive attitude, it's exhausting, but it was something that was needed very much this year.
That's a good way to describe it.
There's two balances to me straight away, patience. So your non-bias, which we felt in our own ventures was a bit harsh. Non-bias the other way, no offence to our colleague Derry, we were like the painter's house. We didn't get as much attention as we felt we should have. You were that conscious of your non-bias situation. And indeed, the Lord Mayor's office is a non-political position, and a lot of people will talk about it in different terms. But you'd have to go back a long, long time, and I don't know when you would, to find somebody who was Lord Mayor, who used it as a political position. It's an apolitical position. The fact that you did have to reinvent how the Lord Mayor operated. And I think for a lot of people who haven't had the privilege of being Lord Mayor, I don't think people outside of that position realise how isolating a position it is. I know I said it to you before you came in, that it's remarkably, you're over on that side of the building in a very quiet office, almost on your own. All your committees are different, they're in different meetings, all the routines you've had with council are different. And it's a very isolating position to add COVID to that. And for the life of me, I don't know how you chaired the council meetings for the 12 months of the way we've had to chair them. Many of us here are chairs of different committees, and chairing a Zoom meeting for six, 10 and 12 people is difficult. But to have to do it for the length that you did it, in the fair way that you did it, I don't, you know, there was always the fear that someone would be asked to speak in front of someone else. I think you, I think we all have to thank you and commend you for how you manage the council meetings. And that is a position that is the most important position of being Lord Mayor. People think of the Lord Mayor as coming out of Finnbar's car or whatever the case may be. But actually, chairing this council for the city is the most important job. The fact that you did it and the manner that you did it, and your patience and your positive attitude stood to you and stood to the council as a result of that. For that, we will all be eternally grateful. And I think, you know, when you look back in many years, people say, when were you Lord Mayor? When were you, if you don't work it out? You will say I was Lord Mayor during the 12-month stage of the pandemic. And that you did create and you did maintain that positive attitude when people needed that. And that is a light that needs to be shone from the Lord Mayor's room in City Hall that people can see. And I commend you and thank you for that. And I couldn't say anything, I couldn't stop talking unless I talked about Stephanie, the Lady Maris, who was a rock for you during the year, as she always has been. She brought great glamour to it because you have a lot of traits, but you're not glamorous, Lord Mayor. So it was great. We had a touch of glamour as well. And on behalf of the Fine Gael group, I thoroughly thank you, and I look forward to having you back here in the seats with us. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor John Sheehan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And on behalf of the Fianna Fáil group and on my own behalf, I'd like to thank both yourself and the Lady Maris, Stephanie, for the work that you've done. As councillor Cal has said, it has been a year like no other, and it has been a huge challenge for the city, but also for the morality in terms of having to reinvent how we do things on a day-to-day basis. You certainly, Lord Mayor, have risen to that challenge, and whether it's doing the school visits differently, council meetings differently, or all the engagements that normally would happen where you have to reinvent everything, that has been a huge challenge, and I think you really rose to that challenge, both yourself and Stephanie, the Lady Maris. You outlined, Lord Mayor, this time last year, that you're very much part of community, and community is very much what you're about. And I think that's shown through right throughout the year, where you kept very positive about things, but also you encouraged groups to take part in things, such as your litter initiative, which really was very successful. And we've seen the beginning of many new groups throughout the city, which have got involved and sprung up from that initiative. And that's a, that's a great legacy to have. The commemorations, which was one of the centrepieces of the year, were particularly challenging. And given the circumstances, I think, you know, they were done very sensitively and very importantly, they continued on in a different way, a lot of them visually and digitally. But, you know, they continued on, and that was really, really important. Lord Mayor, you're likely to be remembered by historians, perhaps more than any of the more recent Lord Mayors. Because when they go to research the pandemic and when they go to research Lord Mayors, you would probably have so much digital material out there on the internet because so much was done digitally, much more so, I think, than any other recent Lord Mayors combined. So your legacy is certainly secure. I'd just like to, on my own behalf, on behalf of the Fianna Fáil group, I'd just like to thank both you and Stephanie, the Lady Maris, for all the service you have done to the city. I hope you get a rest coming in the weeks ahead, but I know, knowing you, you'll be out in St Luke's on a Saturday morning, working away at what you enjoy and giving back to your community. So take a bit of a break, Lord Mayor, before getting back to it and enjoy it. Gormi de Mhaithgut.
Councillor Oliver Moran.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be brief, and I think there were times during the year when I may have taken a little bit too long. But you were always very generous in a chair, Lord Mayor. You chose for your morality themes to do a community and a tidy city. And I was passing through Mayfield recently on a Sunday morning, or on a Saturday morning, when I saw the army of high-vis vests keeping Mayfield and St Luke's tidy, and I was reminded just of that, as councillor Sheehan has just referred to. I think it's fitting that among your last engagements as Lord Mayor were the planting of oak trees in the Glen River Park and wishing a happy 100 birthday to a resident of a gardener's hill. Because there are years when we have to sustain community, but community itself is a much longer investment than that. It was also a year of women. The Women's Caucus was established, so too is the working group on mother and baby homes. And these are issues to do with the visibility of women in Irish society and public life. There are many ways in which women choose to exercise that visibility. A clear part of this year's morality was the visibility of the Lady Maris. In the photographic records that councillor Sheehan has also referred to, Lord Mayor, that visibility will be a very lasting legacy of your morality and that of the Lady Maris as well. It also had a very important contemporary significance. This year has been a very difficult one. For prolonged periods, we have been told to stay at home. Our immediate families were the only contacts which we had. And in those long periods, when we longed for a sense of normality, there was solace, Lord Mayor, in seeing the two of you out, meeting people, providing continuity, and the promise that time would come when we would all meet again. I know a physical meeting this evening was very important to you in that context. I was struck during one of the discussions on the venue, when you said that you had never got to sit in the traditional Lord Mayor's chair in the chamber and chair a meeting of council. In the last year, Lord Mayor, we have all had to make sacrifices. Things don't always work out the way that we imagine them to. But we do what we have to do, putting ourselves aside, because, Lord Mayor, that's the essence of public life. And for that, I want to say thank you to you and to the Lady Mares for your dedication to that life, to the life of the city over the last 12 months, and in providing that continuity and sense of normality through the most unusual and most difficult of years. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Lady Mares.
Councillor McNugent.
Alvera, goc diu, gui ort. Alvera, Stephanie, agus clan Gullair. I'm more than happy, on behalf of the Sheanfein Group, to wish you and Stephanie and the family all the best. I think I said 12 months ago, Alvera, I think we have a bit of a connection in that we came in as the class of 2011, co-opted at that time. Of course, I went and came back again, but I'm happy to be here this evening. And fairness, Alvera, to yourself and your predecessor, Councillor John Sheen, it has been a very difficult time to be in the chair. A tragic time as well for many families. But in yourself, Alvera, I think you spoke about reimagining the role and being the Alvera. And I think you've done that. I think, as mentioned there, I think you, you know, I think you're the eternal optimist. You know, you have a sunny disposition, you're always friendly and outgoing. And I think that came at the right time as well for people as coming through various phases of the Covid-19 restrictions. And I think you chaired the meetings, I think you are fair. I'd have to take umbrage with Councillor Cahill there, that you were strict on the Fine Gael Party. No, I think you were fair to everybody. Only the very odd time, including Monday night gone, maybe that your patience was tested slightly. But in fairness, you are great in the chair, Alvera. And as I said, particularly in terms of a number of things during the year, the commemorations. And really, one of the highlights, I know you don't want to pick out any highlight, but one of the highlights was the event honouring Thomas McCourtlin and Terrence Maxwell. So we just wanted to wish you all the best, Alvera. And sure, we'll be seeing you around again shortly. And it was just Oliver said, yeah, it was more than a pity that you didn't get to chair a meeting in the chamber. Look, but we got on with it and that was your style. You got on with it, got on with it. I think you offered great leadership to the people of Cork at this time and sure going forward as well. So to all the family again, gormaig de maghthadh.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Kieran McCarthy.
Congratulations, Lord Mayor. And truth being told, you did reinvent the role. Certainly, you've laid the foundations for a wider digital outreach for the role of Cork's first citizen, which will really benefit the role for future Lord Mayors over the next few years. But above all, though, you stood over your strong interest in community construction and all the different nuances of it. And you did take part in community life, promoted community life and inspired community life. And in this fast-evolving city like Cork, it's important that those traits are championed. It's from those traits that two of the city's strongest DNA strands, that of togetherness and a rich Corkonian sense of place, are formed. Lord Mayor, on this year's St Patrick's Day, the council projected onto the old concrete Arnheath Hall grain silo, "Er scoa ceila" of "Var na dina", which means "it's in each other's shadows we live", which invokes the sense of community, citizenship and interdependence. And resilience and solidarity, Lord Mayor, are both traits you championed this year and are now more so than ever before needed across our communities. And as you've noted, the battle with the pandemic is, of course, not over yet. And there are many challenges still ahead. You have been on the front line in building the future of communities in Cork. But we're very, very lucky that this council is a story builder, a strategy builder and a capacity builder. And it's something, those traits are all embedded, what you do as well, every day. At every successful council meeting we have logged on to the last year, you can hear about building ideas from scratch and bringing them to life. And the pace of all these ideas has picked up as we prepare to launch a draft development plan to the general public in two weeks' time. It's been very positive to see topics that you have chaired on, ranging from climate action to housing to gender to NTA investment to pedestrianisation, to name but a few, evolving at a rapid rate and also beginning to break their silos and interweave with each other. However, I do agree with Councillor Sheen, the researcher, like me, in years to come. And in writing about how did this council get on in 2020 and 2021 during the pandemic, I think myself or he or she or it in decades to come will be met by your narrative and your name and your leadership and your always enthusiastic outlook to our city and the lives of our citizens. You've continued to push these positive priorities for the benefit of our city. And there is much to learn from each other and ultimately, much to learn. And your mantra as well of "every day is a learning day" is also an open narrative which can and will carry the city of Cork far into its future, especially forming roadmaps to its future to 2040. We all know the city has serious challenges to continue to try to resolve and there will be many bumps along the road. But with positive and driven attitudes like yourself and empowering our citizens to take up those traits, Cork will forever retain its status as an outward-looking Irish southern capital. So well done again. Well done to your Deputy Lord Mayor for his political impartialness all year and for never mentioning Michael Collins at every meeting. But welcome back to the virtual benches. Gormaig de maghthadh.
Thank you, Councillor. Just very briefly, I want to thank everybody for your very kind words. It means an awful lot to me and to Stephanie and we really do appreciate it. And I'm sorry we couldn't get everyone to speak, but unfortunately, we are limited for time. But thank you so much. And I'm now going to ask Deputy Lord Mayor, Councillor Sheen O'Callaghan, to say a few words, please. Thank you very much.
Firstly, I would like to pay tribute to you, Alvera, and to Lady Mares, Stephanie, for guiding this city essentially through what has been a very dark year for our city and for our country. I think we can all agree that you excelled in the role. And it's been talked about already, but, you know, your enthusiasm, your optimism, you touched on it yourself, that you're a glass-half-full person. And you certainly are. And that's exactly what this city needed this year, was someone, an optimist. And, you know, just your can-do approach. A lot of, a lot of people in your position might have, you know, taken the year and just said, oh, I'm unfortunate because there's not that many events on. But you saw, you were very proactive about the whole thing and saw it as a positive, a way of guiding our city through a very dark, tragic time in many ways. And you certainly succeeded in doing that. So thank you, Alvera. I would also like to say that, commend you, because you do have, in my view, great taste in artwork. Particularly in terms of a portrait which you hung in your office. I won't say who the portrait is of, in case I'm accused of being slightly biased. I didn't mention any names though there, Sean. But I think it was, it was an inspired choice for your office, Alvera. And I hope that the new Alvera might retain the portrait in the office, whoever he or she may be. No pressure. For my own part, I think it's fair to say it hasn't been the most stressful year from my point of view. I haven't, it hasn't been, you know, that busy for me as last Alvera. I was on standby a lot due to Covid, but I didn't, didn't, you know, officiate at that many events. But I nevertheless enjoyed the year very much. I didn't, there wasn't hundreds of highlights now, but there was, there was a few. One in particular was the reopening of Princess Street, where I was, I had the honour of being there with the chief executive and members of the business community. And it was, it was a good day and it was emblematic, I think, of the great effort and the very extremely proactive attitude that the council executive has had towards outdoor opening and reopening the city for the hospitality sector. And the feedback which I have got from members of that sector has been hugely positive. And the council executive deserves enormous credit for that. Another highlight was I had the honour of representing our city at the ceremony in UCC to mark the centenary of the deaths of 13 IRA volunteers who were executed by the British between the 1st of February and the 16th of May 1921. That was, that was a great honour for me in this, in this centenary year. Finally, another, another highlight from my point of view, I have to say, more of a personal nature, was I was there to turn the sods to open a walkway at Castleak National School. You know, a new walkway in the school, which is the school that I went to and where both my parents taught and my father was actually principal there for 37 years. And they were able to both attend, so it was, it was a very special day for my family. And I'd like to thank the Alvera and the other members of the Lord Mayor's office in that regard, because, because that took place in the county, my understanding is there was a lot of negotiations involved and to ensure that that took place. So I would like to thank you again in that regard, Alvera. Finally, I would like to very much wish the incoming Alvera and last Alvera the very best of luck for the coming year. In the new Alvera's case, you very much have big shoes to fill. And just, but I have no doubt that you will continue to lead and guide this city in the best possible way. Gormaig de maghthadh.
Thank you, last Alvera. Can I now ask the chief executive to say a few words, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate you personally on an amazing year. I really, some days, your positivity, I scratch my head and think, God, how can he be so positive? But it kept us all going and I think that's come across in everybody's contribution tonight. You found that balance between maintaining history and tradition and doing things differently. And you did that every day with such enthusiasm. As you said to me earlier, Zoom was about cameras, Teams was something that people did together. But you became an expert on all of those and video. I think the Lady Mares shared with me that your mum had sent you to Fesh Matthew for years in terms of public speaking and she should be very proud of you. You created some great content and, as other members said, it's in the history books forever. So, Lord Mayor, congratulations and thank you. From a personal perspective, thank you for being there for me personally, for advice. We don't always agree, but that's part of the piece. But we never fell out, which is also part of the piece. But on behalf of all the staff, I just want to acknowledge and thank you for everything. Lady Mares, lady to the core, grace, poise and style would be the three words. And I suppose it's great to know that the Lord Mayor finally admitted publicly that really behind it all was a great lady. And we knew that anyway. And finally, Deputy Lord Mayor, congratulations to you two for your year. And that's it, Lord Mayor. So well done.
Thank you, chief executive. My final act is just to pay a personal vote of thanks to the Assistant Chief Executive, Brian Gayney, who has been an unbelievable support to me in so many ways during the year. He operates quietly, he slips, works away in the background, but so helpful. So, Brian, thank you so much. Okay, we come to the moment of truth. We take, can I, we will take nominations for the position of Lord Mayor of Cork for the coming year. One minute per proposer to speak about their nominee. So Mary Rose Desmond.
Tip, lads, don't wear hoop earrings with the masks. First off, Lord Mayor, just take the opportunity as well, look, just to add my own congratulations to yourself on the year that you've had. And if you don't mind, just very much in particular to the Lady Mares, Stephanie. I had the privilege of actually attending a number of events with you. And the poise and the ease to which you took to the role, I thought, was hugely commendable. And I think that we're at risk every year to overlook the significant role that the Lady Mares and the partners of previous Lord Mayors play. They don't select to go into public life, we do. And they get thrown into the public eye and represent us without really due credit for the work that they do. So I just want to acknowledge you both and to wish you the very best and congratulate you. Lord Mayor, it is my honour on behalf of the Fine Foil Group to nominate my colleague, councillor Colum Kelleher, for the position of Lord Mayor for the coming year. I first met Colum when I was a county councillor, representing Ballincolig, Carrigline Municipal District. I started to get the occasional call from Colum highlighting various issues to me. Over time, that became a very regular occurrence. And it was very much, though, to be fair, a proactive engagement. Colum was always putting forward constructive ideas and ways he thought we could improve and enhance Ballincolig. What was very evident was Colum's enthusiasm and genuine interest in the community. Colum didn't just come to you to criticise or to look for something, he came with solutions and ideas. It wasn't long before he became an active member of the Ballincolig Community Forum, of which he's still a member. In that role, Colum was working with residents on the ground, listening to their concerns and working with the local councillors, council officials and other authorities, championing the business and community concerns and opportunities in Ballincolig. So it came as no surprise to me, in fact, I was delighted to see Colum secure the Fine Foil nomination to run in the 2019 local elections. I was delighted for two reasons. One, because I knew from firsthand experience that Colum was invested in his community and had the determination to work hard for the benefit of the people in the South West Ward. But secondly, in a year that saw so many young people leave local government here in Cork and right across the country, we had a hard-working young man seeking to put himself forward into the cut and thrust of local politics in order to make a difference. Since elected, I've gotten to know Colum even more over the last two years. What is very evident is his determination and his eagerness to resolve the issues at hand, cut through the red tape and get the job done. In actual fact, I think if I was to associate a catchphrase to Colum, it would be, let's get on with it. Colum may only be a councillor for two years, but he's worked hard on behalf of the community for many years. Since elected, he has thrown himself into the work with an urgency that's refreshing. It is all too easy for us to become complacent and accept the pace at which bureaucracy can move. I think I can safely say that there is not a senior official in Cork City Council who hasn't had Colum come knocking on their door on behalf of the people he represents. Colum's ongoing work and involvement in the community forum and Ballincolig GAA have made his role as chairman of the JPC and board member of Cork Sports Partnership a seamless fit. And I know he gives significant time, interest and energy to those roles. Colum's attitude and aptitude comes as no surprise. He is moulded and inspired by the past, our republican heritage and his grandparents' and parents' influence. But he is driven by the resolve to provide a decent community for his children, Adam and Emily Rose, and our wider society. Colum's parents, James and Stephanie, instilled in him the importance of hard work, decency and the spirit of community. All these are attributes Colum brings to his work as a councillor every day and I know will be the cornerstone of his term in office as Lord Mayor if elected this evening. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor. Can I have a second ear, please, for councillor Colum Kelleher? Yep.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And before again, as I go into my speech, maiden speech, I would like to congratulate you and the Lady Mares for the last number of months and years. But you did work very hard and I appreciate that. And I was delighted to have deputised for you on a number of occasions. It was a great honour and thank you very much for that. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, our councillors, we're here to elect a Lord Mayor for the coming year. And I like that time don't stand still. We can look over our shoulder at the year gone by and, as the Lord Mayor said, everything that has happened. Tonight, we have to look forward. And this is what this meeting tonight is going to do, elect a Lord Mayor for the coming year. There's a lot of talk and a lot of ink and a lot of paper for the last number of weeks about the history of about the history of coming to Ballincolig and the first time. But when you look back at the history of Ballincolig for the last number of years, you had a minister, you had a number of councillors, you had a county mayor living here, and tonight we're going to elect a Lord Mayor from Ballincolig. So there is history in Ballincolig over all the long years that we were in, in local government and at national government. And it's my honour and privilege tonight to second councillor Cullum Kelleher, because since he was elected to Cork City Council, he has worked hard and I have met him on a number of occasions. I could like to stand on his foot a few times and trip him and say, stand back there a while, age is honourable. Because you turn around one corner and he's in front of you and he must have been practising all along because he was everywhere. And I know where the two of us are involved in a lot of stuff here in Ballincolig, we're like shadows to each other. But like, as I said, knowing Cullum, he will be out there morning, noon and night with the chain of office, representing Cork City as Lord Mayor. So it's my honour and privilege, as a member of the Fine Gael Party tonight, to second Cullum Kelleher as the incoming Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Are there further... councillor Thomas Maloney?
Thanks, Ardvera. And I'd like to be associated with all the kind words that everybody said about your term and the Lady Marais as well. I think you've actually done an absolutely outstanding job in the city and absolutely delighted to get a chance to say that as well. The person I'd like to nominate tonight is a person who represents not just his local area or the local ward, but the whole of Cork City, as he has proven over the past seven years. He's a man who prioritises the people and not politics. He's a businessman and he understands the struggle faced by the community during the Covid and even before that. He served as the chair of the Tourism, Arts and Culture SPC, where he supported Cork City in numerous different ways. He was also involved in organising efforts to rid the city of the dogfouling, coming up with creative ideas as part of a cross council committee. He's a popular member of the council, he tries to stay away from politics and he favours responding to people's needs within the community. Deputising on many occasions for his fellow independent, Mick Finn, during his mayoral term, he gained huge experience. In his own words, when he ran the general election in 2020, "I am open, honest, transparent and I strive for the right result for my constituents." As a colleague and a friend who has worked with him over the past seven years, I can attest to these words. I would like to formally nominate councillor Paddy Dunne to the role of Ardvera for Cork City Council for the term of 2021 to 2022. Thanks, Ardvera.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, at enormous expense and by the use of technology, we're going to ask for councillor Mick Finn to second the nomination and he's going to second the nomination virtually. So we've got to hear.
Gorma Mhaillir. Gorma Ardvera. Oglamair Dus Cupardigis. Auguste Stephanie. Ason Obruntukianishiv Imleena. He did a fantastic job, so well done, in very trying and difficult circumstances. I suppose we're making a bit of history ourselves here this evening in terms of a virtual seconding for the Lord Mayor and I'm delighted to formally second councillor Paddy Dunne, fellow ward councillor in Corksoutheight Central Local Electoral Area, also a neighbour, also a friend. It's in his second term as Lord Mayor, as councillor, which has traditionally been a criteria for nominating a candidate. He has worked very closely with people in his community. He has been a good supporter of organisations, of teams, of clubs in the heart of the city's oldest parish, in the South Parish. He's very dedicated to his job and so dedicated, in fact, that I think a number of years ago, he stepped out of his wedding day to attend an AGM, which we were all fairly impressed with, maybe not his wife's son at the time. So I would like to formally second the nomination and wish councillor Dunne all the best this evening.
Okay, we're formally going to call a vote now, please. So I would like you to call out the name of the councillor you wish to vote for when your name is called. So Carmel, do you want to go ahead with the vote, please? Thank you.
Flynn?
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Mahar.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Tynan. Ardvera.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Moran.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Kíohan.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Fitzgerald.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Nugent.
Color Dinni.
Color Sheen.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Collins.
Councillor Lee.
Color Ryan.
Abstein.
Color Boylan.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Cahill.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Bog.
Abstein.
Color Desmond.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color McCarthy.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Shannon.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Ford.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Mick Finn.
Councillor Paddy Dunne.
Color Boyle.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Martin.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color O'Callaghan.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Dunne.
Councillor Dunne.
Color Kearns. Color Denahy.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Canty.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Colet Finn.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Cullum Kelleher.
Councillor Cullum Kelleher.
Color Garrett Kelleher.
Color Cullum Kelleher.
Color Maloney.
Councillor Paddy Dunne.
Color Ring.
Okay, folks, as my final act as Lord Mayor of Cork, it gives me great pleasure to announce that with the majority of votes in his favour, by 21 votes to seven, I hereby declare councillor Cullum Kelleher to be the Lord Mayor of Cork for the coming year. Congratulations, councillor. Okay, just a bit surreal. Thank you, everyone. So, my apologies. So as first act as Lord Mayor, I would like to now call in councillor Joe Cavanagh to present the bouquet of flowers to the Lady Marais, Miss Stephanie Cavanagh. I'm sure you'll be put back up the front fairly soon. And for the former deputy Lord Mayor, considerate to keep a certain portrait in the Lord Mayor's office. We'll talk, we'll talk. I suppose, look, I'll just get straight into it. Oglamair Dus Cupardigis. Is more than a person to do. Try no new about my tough and my ardvera or carker key. Gorma Mhaillir. I wish to open by paying tribute to my predecessor and outgoing Lord Mayor, councillor Joe Cavanagh, and his wife, the former Lady Marais, Stephanie. Covid-19 curtailed your years, Lord Mayor, and you didn't have the same in-person engagement and occasions as previous office holders. However, you adapted and required and adapted to the new virtual world we find ourselves in. You made history by chairing our first online council meeting and furthermore, you brought a commendable and quiet dignity to the role, in particular to the centenary events of the Burning of Cork. Thank you, councillor Cavanagh and Stephanie. As we go through life, we find ourselves wearing many hats. In my own life, amongst other things, I've been a brother, a son, a neighbour, a school friend, a father, a partner, a businessman and a councillor. And tonight, at 35 years of age, I find myself the citizen, the first citizen of this beautiful city, and I realise that I am very young to hold this office. As far as I'm aware, the only former Lord Mayor younger than I am is the now Taoiseach, Michael Martin. The Lord Mayor's position is a role of great responsibility and I'm aware that I have big shoes to fill. I am honoured to be the first Lord Mayor from the newly expanded city, so I may take this opportunity now to thank my proposer, councillor Mary Rose Desmond, and my second ear, councillor Derry Canty, a Ballincolig native. Well, not quite native, Derry, but yeah. You're here long enough now. And for those who supported me in the vote tonight for giving this moment in history to me and to my family. And for all the elected representatives, the goal should be the same. We should do all that we can so that for everyone, life tomorrow is a bit better than life today. Making life better is a challenge of political life and the position of Lord Mayor is a challenging one that demands service. For example, John Erneth, mayor from 1859 to 1862, led efforts to build a railway from Cork City to McCroom. Sir John Francis McGuire, mayor in 1853, launched the Cork Examiner to give a voice to the demand of the repeal of the Union. But in the process, he created the Chronicle of Life here since 1841. Anthony Barry, former Lord Mayor in 1961, recorded the life and the development of the beautiful city with his camera. Our city's martyr, Lord's Mayor, Tommasa Curtin and Terence Maxwini, gave their lives for the causes of Irish freedom in 1920. And I'm acutely aware of the service given to this office by my predecessors and I only hope that I can emulate the commitment given by them to this beautiful city. So you may ask, who is Cullum Kelleher? Well, I was born in 1986 to two wonderful parents, James and Stephanie Kelleher, who are here tonight and very happy for that. And I grew up here in Ballincolig. I shared a happy home with my four brothers, well, my mother would say for the most part, but we shared it anyway. And we received our education here in Ballincolig. But most important of all, I am blessed that Rachel has given me two beautiful children, my pride and joy, Adam and Emily Rose, who are also here with me today. So I suppose a bit of background on myself. I worked in the building industry under the economic crash of 2008 and like far too many other people at that time, I found myself facing a challenge. What was I to do next? After considering our options, my brothers and I decided to go into business ourselves. And at the time, people told me I was mad to start my own business in my twenties, in the middle of a global economic recession. And you know what? Looking back now, they were probably right. However, we worked hard and we struggled, but we built a successful business together and in the fullness of time, it prospered. As the business grew, I noticed two things were happening. Firstly, I was becoming better known in my community here locally in Ballincolig and I was becoming more actively involved in community issues. Secondly, I was dealing more and more with council and officialdom. And I suppose as one would deal with more officialdom, the more opinionated one may become about what you think works and what might not work and for people and how to implement a positive change. These experiences led me to consider becoming involved in politics. I joined Fianna Fáil and became actively engaged in the general election campaign of 2016. And in the following years, I became more involved in Fianna Fáil and locally here within the community. For example, I was a member of the board of Ballincolig Community Forum and through my business, I became a sponsor of Westgate here in Ballincolig, Ballincolig GAA and Ballincolig Basketball Clubs respectively, as I was acutely aware of the funding issues to keep these vital community services going. I was honoured to be selected by the Fianna Fáil party to contest the 2019 local election. I suspect the people that told me I was mad to go into business in my twenties felt the same about my candidacy for Cork City Council. But I was passionate about representing my community and working with them and for them. I was elected to represent the South West Ward, so this, as I suppose, is the perfect time to thank my campaign team and my supporters for helping getting me elected to Cork City Council. And in particular, I want to pay credit to my cousin and my campaign manager, who isn't in-house here tonight, but I know she's watching via video link, Dr Maria Buckley. Thank you. And without you and without the team that you moulded, tonight would have not been possible. So you may ask, what have I learned from these experiences? In my twenties, I was one of the thousands of people that faced a choice. How was I going to survive? Some people retrained, some emigrated and some, like myself, took whatever opportunities and work were available. What I learned was that we must face the challenge and tackle the problems head on before us. They do not go away of their own accord, they will only fester and get worse. Whenever people discuss the problems of the day, some people may point out four negatives. They may state, we can't have this, we don't have that, we can't do this and we can't do that. If this negative attitude had been present under any previous Lord's Mayor, when they faced challenges, history would look very different today. Would John Erneth have built the railway from Cork to McCroom? Would Sir Francis John McGuire have kept the Cork Examiner open after Daniel O'Connell died? Would Anthony Barry, former Lord Mayor, have bothered to record the life in the beautiful city? And would Tommasa Curtin and Terence Maxwini have bothered to challenge the world's mightiest empire for the freedom of our country? Thankfully, it is a question we do not have to answer because they answered the challenge before them. As public representatives, we are not here to state the obvious of how complex the challenges are. We are here to take on those challenges and work towards solutions so that we may make our communities and our city as a whole a better place. John F Kennedy described the need of politicians to face challenges before them in his inaugural speech in 1961. He said, "All of this will not be finished in the first hundred days, nor will it be finished in the first thousand days, nor in the life of this administration, nor perhaps even in our lifetime on this planet, but let us begin." As Lord Mayor, I want everyone in Cork to do one thing. Let us look at our city and see all the good and potential around us, the challenges before us. They are not a reason to avoid them. We should not fear the challenge of a revitalising Cork because we have so much to offer. We have a brilliant, educated workforce and we have two universities within our city, a fantastic food and hospitality culture, a good airport with good connectivity that will return, a port on the cusp of developing its full potential. We have a fine tourism product, a rich history of culture... A rich history of culture, music, literature. Artists come from all over the world to take part in our jazz festival, our film festival, and the Cork Choral Festival, but to name a few. We have a great network of community organisations and community activists. We are home to many multinational companies and also indigenous businesses. We have beautiful facilities such as the Opera House, Park E Chiv, and the City Hall Concert Hall. We have the Crawford Art Gallery, the Glucksmann Gallery. And for those who may not know, we even have a butter museum. There is so much good in the beautiful city. So let's put it to work. In my year as Lord Mayor, I want all of us to work together as a unit. And I sincerely mean that. I want us to fight for our city. I want us to fight for its people and its communities so that we can build a better future for everyone. People trusted us with their votes. They charged us to offer them real hope, to make life better in their communities here in Ballincolig, in Bellarnie, in Glanmire, in Douglas, in Turner's Cross, in Bishopstown, in Toker, in Mayfield, in Blackpool, in Ballyvolan, Ballyfahan, and everywhere else within the city. As we emerge from the Covid pandemic, we should put to work the great lesson of this pandemic. If this experience has taught us anything, it has taught us what is possible, when the urgency and will exist. Before Covid, few people had worked from home. However, during the pandemic, people adjusted to working from home and homeschooling in short order. We see communities putting its best foot forward for the greater good. We are here tonight in the Sportland, in Kalashtaculla, because we, as a council, stepped up and handed over our concert hall in the interest of public health and assisting the national effort with the vaccination rollout. So may I take this opportunity to thank the school this evening for making the hall available to us for this historic night, and also to the city council staff that I know worked tremendously hard over the last number of days so that we could be standing here and sitting here this evening. And I would ask for a round of applause because they've done an absolute brilliant job. Ironically enough, there was the Muntor de Vile in Guelcalashtaculla. Master Gallicor was a former deputy principal when I, well, he's deputy principal now, but he was the principal of the Guelcalashtaculla when I was here. And I think it was in fifth year when the Sportland was actually being built. They were pouring the base. And I was in his history class and I wasn't paying attention to him, but I was looking out here and they were levelling the ground out here. And little did I know that almost 14 years later, I'd be standing here to be elected Lord Mayor of the city. So it's quite ironic. But look, these things, you know, happened. And we're here tonight. So my commitment to you as fellow councillors, officials, and to the city is that I will work hard and listen to you all and represent the city with pride and enthusiasm. In the year ahead, let us inject this kind of urgency and determination we showed during the pandemic into our work so that we can be sure that we do not lose momentum and we need to get the job done post-Covid. As councillors and as a council working with communities and representative groups, let us demand that some of that urgency we saw during this pandemic and put it to use so that we can work together and realise the potential in our communities and our city as a whole. Aside from Covid, the biggest issue our nation faces at the moment is housing. And I am passionate about the provision of housing for our citizens as a whole. We here in Cork City Council can be very proud of the fact that we are leading the way nationally as a local authority in the delivery of both social and affordable housing. And this is in no small part down to the forward thinking of our executive and our elected members. Let us continue this vital work. If we do this and if we meet the challenges ahead of us and meet the challenge of making this very best of our beautiful city. Finally, I would like to finish on a personal note. There are two very important women in my life who are sadly not with us today. They both played a huge role in making me the man I am today. Firstly, my grandmother on my dad's side, Hansy Cullagher, our nana. She was a businesswoman in Ballymacara. She ran a general store with her husband, Paddy Cullagher. And her business acumen was well-known far and wide. It was joked locally that you could call to Hansy for the paper and come out with a washing machine on your back. Some people say the apple didn't fall too far from the tree in relation to my own skills. And last but not least, my mother's grandmother, Eileen Bolster-McCallough. Eileen was effectively my second mother. Eileen was also a businesswoman. She hailed from Mallow. She grew up behind a shop counter in Baldine and came to Cork City to train as a bookkeeper in scarrys in the 1950s. She went on to open a furniture store in Perry Street in the city, where I spent every weekend of my youth working with her in the shop and then home to Mallow. She was a huge support to me and always encouraged me and pushed me to strive for a better for me and for my family. It is a personal sorrow for me that she is not around to see my success in business and furthermore, that she is not here tonight. Being a business owner in Perry Street, Eileen was sometimes, more often than not, in conflict with the council or the then corporation. And used to say to me, Colum, if you ever make it into City Hall, get in there and sort them out. Well, Eileen, I'll try my best. Gormaimile magus, caille. Thank you. So look, we'll carry on swiftly. The next item is speeches by members of the council. Who's the next speaker in relation to that? It's not Matt. Okay, fair enough. Okay. Councillor Cletfinn.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to, on behalf of the Green Group, congratulate you in your new role. I'm only a couple of years on the council and a lot of this ceremony and stuff like this is quite new to me. So I've had to learn on the job. But one of the things that I can say about you is that you beam from ear to ear when you meet people. So when I started in City Hall, I'd meet this young chap coming along, beaming from ear to ear and saying, hello, Clet. And I going, hello, Colum. So anyway, you follow in the footsteps of two gentlemen, councillor John Sheehan and councillor Joe Cavanagh. Both very welcoming to new councillors and very respectful of every party in the council. So I just want to congratulate you tonight and wish you the very best of luck. Thank you.
Councillor Sean Martin.
Just on behalf of the Fianna Fáil group, I suppose, like Clet, I mentioned when you came into council two years ago. You're definitely a man in a hurry. You're full of ideas. I like the concepts you're rolling out tonight. Community. And previous Lord Mayor, councillor Cavanagh, had the same. And I think you will do, can do. But remember one thing, Lord Mayor, there's four Lord Mayors here who were here before. You're former Lord Mayors. And if you need any advice, I need to count to three. Be sure to pick you up the phone and give us a shout because we're always there to help you. And I like the energy you've shown tonight. I like the concepts, the ideas. And I think maybe we need a bit of that in City Hall. And again, just as I'm standing here, just to thank the executive for what they have done here tonight, Paul Minein and Brian Gany in particular. And I think you've touched on something that a lot of councils have been saying in their own party groups. I think we have a development plan before us at the moment. And I think as council, we need to take a serious look at how we bring housing forward for Arne people. And I think that is our job as a council. We have to put our print on the incoming development plan. You'll be leading that as Lord Mayor. And we have to look at it and deliver housing over the next three to four years for the people of Cork City. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Garrett Cullagher, please.
Gormailgadh ard vera agus bivaliam sa er sun an grúpa fein an sa fin gael. Coogardis le iain af lait agus le d'ichlawnach sacht a toffanoch er no chaid dar rúl. And especially, I suppose, congratulate your family. It's a big day for your family and for yourself, Lord Mayor. And I wish you every success in the year ahead. You mentioned in your opening remarks about your own sales acumen. And I was reminded of a story on my own campaign trails because when we all put ourselves forward for public office, you know, it can be pretty daunting. But having a strong family behind us is key. And I think you're very fortunate in that regard. But I remember the first election that I contested seven years ago, making my way around our community here in Ballincolig, knocking on doors and trying to convince people that I'm somebody that might be worth supporting. But I can remember distinctly knocking on number 32 Rosewood. And I had my story to tell, you know. And, you know, was kind of hoping that I might be able to kind of impress a couple of people inside. But there was a woman met me at the door and she had an entirely different agenda, you know. So as I was trying to put my best foot forward and, you know, sell myself, I suppose, for want of a better expression, this woman asked me, where do you go to get your tyres? You know. And straight away was kind of on her own agenda and wanted to get to her own outcome from this little exchange that we were having on her doorstep. But I suppose, look, that story in a nutshell, you know, I suppose not only speaks of your mother, Stephanie's, sales acumen, but also speaks for the fact that she was looking out for you. You know. And in any interactions that I've had with your mother, with your family, they've all been very positive. They're very supportive of you. And no doubt that they'll be of tremendous assistance to you in your year as Lord Mayor. So to your mother, to your father, Jim, to Emily, who ended up being very good pals with my own daughter, met on a couple of occasions during the morality of councillor John Sheehan and kind of became good friends. And to Adam as well. And to your whole family, Lord Mayor. I wish you every success. Agus ta súil go gnoir ag gialleat, so bhdiain a tháil a chacht.
Next call on Corlor Ken O'Flynn.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And first of all, can I just offer my heartfelt congratulations? I knew you would make it to that chair very fast. And I knew that the first night I went out canvassing with you in Ballincolig with Jim and came home and had the slice of apple tart with your mother, you know. I said, this is a man that's going places. And I want to personally congratulate you because it means an awful lot when you have somebody that you regard as your friend getting ahead and doing well in life and achieving something. And I'm immensely proud of you. On a personal note, I want to pass that on to you. Lord Mayor, on behalf of the technical group, of course, we want to congratulate you. We face tremendous challenges as this city opens up. And I believe the selection that we've made tonight with you as Lord Mayor is the right selection. A man who's in business, a man who is involved in sports, a man who is involved in his community and a family man. A man for all seasons. A man who is the right man to put the right step forward for Cork as the city opens up, as we face new challenges through Covid. So I want to wish you all the best, all the success in the world. I know you will do a magnificent job. This is a very, very special night for Stephanie and for Jim and your brothers. And when all this is lifted and we're able to have a drink again, I look forward to celebrating with the entire clan. God bless and well done and congratulations.
Bivalam gleic a corlor ring, maite do hale.
Gormailgadh ard vera agus estasi sin raolat. Er mohun fein agus er hun sin fein boalim coogard agus soc tri hurt lait sa agus de clawn an chao anoch. Es more an a chaid d'chá agus es more an a chaid than clawn. It's difficult to quantify exactly how much of an honour it is, but I'm sure you're aware. And just personally, I want to put that on the record. So coogard a slat a soc chin. I know it's also a very historic night as well. And councillor Canty earlier on described, I suppose, the long history of public service that exists in this area. But just to add my own voice to that, I know it's a very, very historic night for Ballincolig. And that makes it extra special for yourself to be entering into the office of Ard Vera on this historic occasion. You welcomed me the other night, on Monday night, to the council. And I was very, very appreciative of your warm words. And I know councillor Cullagher here has touched on an anecdote from the campaign trail in 2019. But I suppose, I just wanted to, I suppose, back to you as such, you know. Those were great times back then and they were great memories. And ultimately, I suppose, that election has brought you to this place here today. So it's a big honour for me to be able to say that to you, Coogardigus. And far be it for me, as a new councillor, only a week in here, to say to a veteran like you how you should act. But I want to put on record, you know. And it was mentioned earlier on, and you'll be well aware of it, in your speech and in your fantastic words, you touched on some of the great Ard Vera we've had down the years and the great things that they've done. And I'm sure you'll agree with me, the two names stand out above all else there. Maxivna agus Macurton. And those were two men who, in very different times, obviously, gave their lives, you know. And the two things that they had in common was they put the citizens of the city above all else, indeed, their lives. Now, I know we live in very, very different times. But that same philosophy can inform us as we go about our business as public representatives. And in keeping with that and in keeping with the mentions earlier on about the office of Ard Vera being a political and above-party politics. I know you'll continue and I trust you'll continue in that fine tradition. So cairda agus ard vera, I just want to once again wish you coogardigus, er sun sin fein. We're looking forward to the year ahead. Agus gnoir ag tháil a chacht agus buin chane of asan keilora. Agus buin chane of asan keilora. Gormailgadh.
Gormailgadh, Corlor. And before I move on to the next speaker, I'm just reminded during that campaign, I met the now councillor Ring outside Chipper beyond Topaz. We bumped into each other and my chips spilled all over the ground. Ollan got down his hands and his ears and he started picking up the chips. I didn't have to have to tell him I wasn't going to eat them. Like. The next councillor I call is councillor Paddy Deneen, The next councillor I call is councillor Paddy Dunne, who is joining us virtually.
Hi. Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you indeed. First of all, before I start, I just want to just thank Joe and Stephanie for the great job well done last year, and I look forward to seeing them someday soon. Well done to yourself on being duly elected this evening. I have to say that it is indeed an honour to be nominated, just even for it, to be nominated for the position of Lord Mayor is indeed humbling. And I thank my colleagues on the technical group for supporting me in that manner. As I mentioned, nomination, I always believe that the nomination for a position of Lord Mayor should be on merits, and it should be on the number of years that a member spends on the council. Should also, just should also, again, the fact that the members or member who is going to be nominated should be able to be re-elected, as this certainly shows that they work hard on the ground. I'm glad to say that I meet this criteria, as do many others, many others who will never get a chance to hold the office of Lord Mayor. This is shameful, and the system needs to be addressed in due course. And hopefully, we might be able to do that over the next few years, which I hope. Your point, Lord Mayor, mentioned earlier that the people of Cork own City Hall, and it is the people of Cork who elect us to represent them. And it is this vote, the people's vote, that should decide who is and who is not duly elected to the office of Lord Mayor. Nominations should not be left to five or six people from any party in a meeting room to decide for the others to follow. I think we all need to look back to 2019 and think of those who voted for ourselves, and to think of those and saying, I think, are we doing what they want us to do? Because I think not. I think not. I think they want us to act independently from pact and independently from the promise, from gifts or promise of gifts. They say that all is fair and love and war, but there was no real fairness in tonight's election when we have a pact in operating within the City Council. So, Lord Mayor, with all that said, I do congratulate you on your election. I honour the chain, I honour the office, and I will honour you as Lord Mayor for the next 12 months and look forward to working with you closely for the development of Cork City and its people in due course. Well done. Thank you.
Good morning, Corlor. Next item I'd like to call on the chief executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On my own behalf and on behalf of all the executive and staff, wish to congratulate you on your election tonight, and also to assure you that we're always there for you and with you, and we're never but a phone call away 24/7. And we just wish you every success in your year, also to your beautiful family and your beautiful daughter and son, who probably don't appreciate yet the significance of tonight, but they will always be very proud, and I'm sure they'll really enjoy being part of the magic that is being the first citizen of Cork. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Good morning. And Kate Isomella, Erin Clark, the election of the deputy Lord Mayor. I will now take nominations, one minute per proposer. So I will now take nominations for the proposer of the position of deputy, Lass Ardvera Corki. Corlor Sheehan, I wish you the best.
Good morning, Lord Mayor. Congratulations. I'd like to propose the nomination for deputy Lord Mayor of councillor Mary Rose Desmond. I've known councillor Desmond for many years, both before she was on council and indeed during her time in the county council. And a number of things stand out, both her family, her commitment to family, and also her commitment to her community. Her mother Carmel, who's a real powerhouse, along with her late father, Sir, instilled in councillor Desmond the values, I think, which she holds today. Her values of family in terms of extended looking out for people, her involvement with the Lions Club, but also she comes from a family of strong women. Her own grandmother, Mara Rose, was a member of Cymunamann. And this legacy of Mara Rose, Carmel and Mary Rose, I think, continues today. And indeed, in the own council, with other councillors here, you know, she's current Chair of the Women's Caucus, and that commitment, I think, is to be upheld. Also, in terms of her commitment to community with the over 13 years membership of the Lions Club, chairperson of the Douglas Community Association, and also a former scout leader. Indeed, Lord Mayor, it's impressive to see how many former members of the scouting association have ended up on council. Maybe there's something of a grooming thing there in terms of leadership and being involved in community. Mary Rose, I think, instills all the good values that a councillor should have. She's quiet, she's hardworking, she gives very solid advice, and she doesn't rush into things and make any rash judgements, and I think she would make an excellent deputy Lord Mayor. Good morning.
Good morning, Corlor Sheehan. Can I get a second or for councillor Mary Rose Desmond?
I always have to do that, Lord Mayor. It's amazing, isn't it? I don't know what it is, but I generally have to. Lord Mayor, can I just take a moment to congratulate you on achieving such high office? And I look forward to working with you throughout the year. As was already said, you have quite a lot of backup here and experience, so you can lean on us and indeed over here as well, and we look forward to working with you. Lord Mayor, I have known the Mary Rose Desmond and indeed the Desmond family for over 40 years. I was about five when I met them first. And we sat around that large mahogany table in the front room where we organised various local elections and general elections, and Mary Rose and her entire family canvassed for me over many years. The family are steeped in community and business in Cork, going back over many generations. The Desmonds are, as they were known, as the Forty Fives, who were well known in Crosshaven, and they were particularly great swimmers. Mary Rose Desmond's uncle, Declan, won the Lee Swim back in the 50s, and there's a great tradition of swimming still in the Desmond family. And her father, Cyril, was a very well-known car salesman in PJ O'Hayes, and indeed ran a very successful petrol station on Lavitt's Quay for many years as well. And it became a bit of a hub for Fine and Fire. I think Cyril at one stage wondered whether the petrol would ever be put in danger of being sold because there was such other activity going on. And indeed, Mary Rose's mother, Carmel, who's looking in tonight along with the entire Desmond family over on the South Douglas Road, she's one of the Joyce's, of course, from Georges Quay, and her parents ran a very successful shop and other businesses on Georges Quay. Her grandmother, or her mother, Mary Rose's grandmother, as has been said, was very involved in republican activity in Cork in the 20s, was a very active member of Cymunamann. And it was really from her grandparents and her parents where she learned the virtues of community and helping community, and that's what she does in her job on a daily basis, helping people over a wide variety of issues. She's chairperson of the Women's Caucus on City Council, which gives voice to issues relating to women and promoting women in politics. And this is nothing new for Mary Rose, as another part of her family, the McCarthy's, are practically all women. You'd imagine, wonder how that is, but that is the case. Practically all women, all of them active in politics, in Fine and Fire politics, and worked for TDs over the years, Danny Wallace, and indeed canvassed with Mary Rose over many elections and have done great work. And so it's a natural progression for Mary Rose to be involved in politics and to be promoting women, and I think that's something that is very important. And indeed, her cousin ran for City Council on the north side of Cork in the 60s as well. So as you can see, Mary Rose is amidly experienced to take up this position, having served historically on both Cork County Council and Cork City Council. And that gives her great experience, and so it gives me great pleasure to second her nomination to be the deputy Lord Mayor of Cork City for the coming year. Good morning.
So I will take any other nominations for the position of deputy, Lass Ardvera. Just as I made note to the meeting, we are currently over running time, so I would ask that it be expediated. Corlor Ring, I wish you the best.
Good morning, Ardvera. I wish to propose councillor Fiona Kearns for Lass Ardvera. I hope you're happy and safe. I hope you're not going to have trouble. 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 Councillor Fiona Kearns has been a great friend to me over a number of years, and I suppose this week sums up the kind of person that she is. She's been extremely supportive to me during the week, and back in 2014, I was ward captain for her during her election campaign. And the one thing that stuck with me during that campaign, amongst all the fun we had and the usual, I suppose, crack you have when you're canvassing, was the genuine warmth that the people of the area that she's from around Ballyfianna had for her, and that speaks volumes about a person. Later in 2016, I remember the biggest smile I've ever seen on her face was the day that she was deputising at a Cork match, and, you know, she was made for that particular position. So I hope you're happy and safe. Councillor Fiona Kearns. Good morning.
Good morning, Corlor. And providing we have no other nominations, I will now take a vote on the position. Oh, also, I need a second or for councillor Fiona Kearns. Corlor Nugent. Valat de Kuint. Good morning. So providing there's no other nominations, we'll now call a vote, please, for the position of Lord Mayor, deputy Lord Mayor.
Corlor O'Flynn. Corlor Maher. Corlor Tynan. Corlor Cavanagh. Corlor Moran. Corlor Kieran. Corlor Fitzgerald. Corlor Nugent. Corlor Sheehan. Corlor Collins. Corlor Ryan. Corlor Boylan. Corlor Cahill. Corlor Bog. Corlor Desmond. Corlor McCarthy. Corlor Shannon. Corlor Ford. Corlor McFinn.
Councillor Fiona Kearns.
Corlor Boyle. Corlor Martin. Corlor Callaghan. Corlor Dunne.
Councillor Fiona Kearns.
Corlor Kearns. Corlor Dennehy. Corlor Canty. Corlor Colet Finn. Ardvera. Corlor Garrett Kelleher. Corlor Maloney. And Corlor Ring.
With the majority of votes in our favour, 20 to 8, I hereby declare councillor Mary Rose Desmond to the deputy Lord Mayor of Cork for the coming year. Good morning. Lass Ardvera, it gives me a great honour, a great pleasure, and I'm delighted for you tonight, and I know you'll do the office proud, so you may take a speech. Lass Ardvera, I wish you good morning.
Thank you all very much indeed. I know we're up against the clock. It's a genuine honour to be elected deputy Lord Mayor this evening, and I'd like to thank all the members who have supported me, and I'd like to particularly acknowledge councillor Fiona Kearns for contesting the election, and I think it's great to see two women contesting a position in council this evening. I particularly want to thank councillor Sheehan and councillor Shannon, and I'll talk to you about doing my election literature there for the next election when you're coming out along. I wasn't too sure I was quite recognising everybody, but sincerely, I want to acknowledge the comments that you made in relation to my family, my extended family, because they're very much the backbone, and I think all of us here as elected members know that we couldn't be here without family and loved ones that support us along the way. And I suppose I very much want to acknowledge my own mother, who is watching in. She'd kill me for mentioning age, but has, like all the rest of us, adapted later in life to technology and is watching the live streaming at home there this evening, and I'm glad that she's with us to be able to do that. I do know that we were really reared in with regards to being aware of what went on in our community outside of our own front door as well, and I do know that the opportunities that were afforded to me stemmed from their hard work and the love and encouragement that they gave all of us, myself and my three brothers and their grandchildren in turn. Unfortunately, my father isn't alive to witness this this evening, but I'm certainly very glad and proud for my mother for her involvement in the city over the years. And I suppose just as well, Lord Mayor, just to congratulate you and your family. It was an honour to nominate you, and I look forward to working with you over the coming year. And I suppose just to flag, I will be taking the opportunity as deputy Lord Mayor to continue to highlight the work that myself and my fellow members on the Women's Caucus are doing with regards to female participation in local government. And I will be ensuring that you do likewise during your year as well, and I'm sure taking note of your comments with regards to your much-loved grandparents or your grandmothers, that won't come as any difficulty to you. And I suppose this evening as well, I do have a little gift for you. I know you're very much a reader, and I have one also for the outgoing Lord Mayor, and I'll give to you later, I won't give now, but it's a good guise, How Men Can Be Better Allies For Women in the Workplace, but it's a really, really good read. So I'm going to give this to you, that you can have the weekend to read it, we'll discuss on my book report on Monday. So, and I suppose just to be fair, it is a Friday night, and I know the late night show's finished and everything, but the Women's Caucus does have one for every member of the council, male and female, to take and digest as well, and a very, very sincere thank you to all of the councillors this evening. Thank you.
Okay, so good morning, Lass Ardvera. So I hope you're happy and safe. I hope you're happy and safe. That's all, folks.